Yeah, but people, yeah, but I had a hot spot up with 182 people before in town.
Okay.
Someone would come, but why? Yeah.
And then possible Texas.
Yeah.
And do we know when Scott's, we have a date for when Scott's coming back?
We're in.
Oh, okay. We're watching.
Right. I have a phone ringing, sorry, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Anybody here want to comment? That is a man, go ahead, come on.
But one small thing and then we'll have to go into executive session because of land. I think it should be on the ground. October 15th at 7:00 PM, would you guys mind if Heart of the Flint House chapter of the St. Peter's here in itself in this room?
Why was that, is that a date?
As of noon.
Kansas City? When's that?
October what?
13th.
Um. No, that's after case.
Why is that? So there's, we don't need this.
Yeah, no need over here.
So I just want to make sure before I admit officially, we wanted to meet one then they're trying to take turns meeting in every county in different houses and they haven't met one yet, my house was a good pre-planned. So, okay.
Not talking to the public, did it?
It is.
Uh, do we need Josh or?
No, it's not our late round.
I'll talk to my, I'll make a motion to meet in executive session with a man that's on the record, I'm a development director, how long?
15 minutes.
From 8:35, if that, you know, just to 10 or?
Um, you might lose some communication questions.
Yeah, so we'll go from 8:35 to 8:50. Uh, to discuss some other content about related financial, those are trade secrets of personal trust and all those. All those embarrassed out. Uh, I'll put a second zone in. Sure.
I'll just sit there.
That's all I have. Good, I thought our meeting later I have to tell this for the word of it and work. Got very long received lots and lots of questions. You mean applicants or more, more entities that are joining? Okay. Good.
All right.
All right.
You want to say Stephanie's?
I feel like you.
Yeah. Before we take ours. On this note.
All right, I was working on the budget stuff. Yeah, I actually feel assisted. Yeah, I'm pulling up the bills and estimating. Okay. Good morning. Okay. Um, before we go into executive session, I have, um, just to let you know that the internet connection for the wire was down on the first floor, totally sucks. And Sonny told me to let you know that it wasn't, at first they didn't need an internet connection because there were the things, I guess the. The sheriff's office has their own connection in there, but I need to have for my cell phone because when I go to log into different things, I have, they, they. Oh, they send you. And so I have a hard time doing on to some of his website, like the Dunkin' Don't sites. So he just said to let you know that I don't know if there's something you need to do to, to put like a little box down here or a little board with recommendations. He, he said to talk to you and then you guys would have to get the input to increase it and I just thought I'd let you know that it's something I want to look at because like it was, I don't know who else down here uses it, I don't know if the sheriff's office needs it or not, but it's, it's, it comes in those and it's down all of the half the time because it's building is part of the, for my third floor.
Is it just a rooster box?
I think it's just a rooster box, so. And I just wanted to let you know that. So do you have to get up and walk outside or something to get your notes? Well, what I have to do is I have to walk around my office until I get a bar and then I wait for the thing. Then I gotta run over to my computer and type my code in. I mean, I can use it outside, it's not a big deal, but.
Are these the ones that plug in? I mean, we have all our assets, it just plugs under the wall.
I would think that it would be something that they could just put in, you know, like even in a, in a just up the mechanical note that would just make boost signal on the first floor. And then it would be.
So they show what it was possible?
He didn't tell me, he just told me to, I'd have to go through people. Ask him to get us surprises ASAP. Whatever we need magically make it work. Please get us. Okay, I will ask him. And then Etha is asking about two chocolate, if we'd like to have two chocolate here, I can contact them and coordinate that. They provide it? It will, it's for our insurance people, our people, so and then I think that if somebody doesn't have our insurance.
They don't have the whole or the?
You should have. Oh, okay. Well, I mean, I just thought I'd ask and I can let them know that our local health department will be willing to. In our meeting we'll ask Caitlin if they're planning a big one or not. Okay. And then I'm going to meet with them, with Etha also tomorrow, we have a call about the wellness program and they were wondering about having a, one of those, uh, the biometric screening things here and I didn't know if you have a problem with me setting that up and having one of those here. Because within those that have the health savings account will get that money and then those that don't have the health savings account, um, they have an option to get a gift card from Etha, not from you guys, so. So if you have a problem with me meeting. I'm fine with that. Okay, I wanted to chat with you before I did. And then I would like to speak with you guys and maybe. Maybe for someone.
Uh, what?
A very personnel issue. Is your. A personnel issue regarding me.
I don't actually want to go into executive session for some, to, or under, calling exception to Kansas City's act, that's making a lot of personal matter. Exception to discuss personal matter, whether you know like the personnel, to protect the rights and privacy and who is involved. How long?
Yeah.
For 15 minutes, I'll say 8:55, I'm coming back in here at 9:10. With Stephanie Burgett, the HR director. And just by calling. Also present.
What minutes are you on today?
For 15 minutes, come back in about 10 seconds. Well, I'm sorry if you did all that.
I am, I.
You.
Y'all, 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 right?
I didn't want to take them. All right, sir. So, good.
Oh, thank you.
Quiet for a period of fifteen minutes, I'll say, coming back in here in uh twenty-six. Second. Time, time, I'll put some time.
So yeah.
There are colleagues that have just been.
Hi, thank you. Definitely can finish up the stuff.
Yes.
Okay. People taking. I'm talking.
Well, you can't move.
Oh, wait, it's your right.
Yeah.
Josh. Yeah. One other thing I have to do that. I don't know.
Oh, we gotta leave this off over thirty. My heart's wrong about that, so. You just go those kind of ones.
And you make more things to do. The other person. You show me how that's.
That's a beautiful mission.
And then the position. Oh, yes, yes. He's already.
Well, we're very concerned.
Uh, yes.
Been a long time.
And it is. Being people.
That's right. Um. I don't know. On the. You see. I was supposed to. Walk. It's in my. Now, did all the. All the time. That was. Thank you.
I feel like I'm controlling.
Down, yeah. That's Steven. Um, maybe there's some kind of. And we did. That will. And.
Does he want to do anything?
Those are.
We either talk to each group for the.
Say they're wrong.
Yeah.
I don't know. Um.
Yeah.
Three, four minutes.
Been a long time.
It's been been around.
I love that.
We've been doing forty years. Oh, that's.
Yeah.
This is from home on. I remember. That's true.
Yeah.
Now, it is. Especially. You're a very wise guy. Because when it's high, it can be. Be.
When you can't. You're an alcoholic. Or might as well. He can't be. This is very.
No, I don't think so, babe.
One minute. Ten minutes of extension. Right session.
All right.
Tell her. It should be.
Ten more minutes.
I'm going to draw. Keep going. It's.
Okay. All right. I think I'm.
I don't know. It's been older. I can't.
Yeah. Looks right.
No.
Some one little.
Yeah. One minute. We're. This is David. I was.
Another. You know, my. There's something here. For. So that actually did that. Want to turn that. This is. I. All I do is hearing. All. And I'm. I know. So. It would. Fire.
Go through the process.
Oh, come on, man. Yeah.
I don't know where you are. Yeah.
Something. Something there. Um. So I just. Remember. So.
Was she gonna?
Uh, she would probably have. But the section. The law. We don't say anything. Since they're not going to vote her yet. It was. Start with.
We got. Maybe. Motion.
Uh. And if there's anything else.
Exactly.
I just want.
Exactly. Well, I want. I didn't. She could put that. On that. Call.
Yeah. And see, that's. You know, most of the ones that we had up there. Yeah. That's. Long and wide.
Well, see, that's what we did. So. For. I went on board. It's really. I. Do. Maybe I told it.
And was it David? Well, I don't know.
Thank you for all. Yeah.
There's four signs. We're there. And first. He wants to die.
Yeah. I've got. Very much.
One. Not that. I mean, it just.
And that was.
And.
Now, sign.
You have. You have one. Our.
Then you have to pick up the lines again.
And we will. Fix me on.
Those are.
Really? A long time. It's been. It's. Wow. If we could give them that. Over. We have good things up. Of. Your.
Oh. Oh.
Yeah. Two. We can both say. Cause we're. Actually. It's. Very. Yeah. One.
One minute.
Oh. No action taken from the next session. Right. That's. Good. Then that. I'm still waiting on the. I am. The best. Josh.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's.
That's rare.
Yeah.
I am. Technically. So the ordinance that you passed. It's written up on ordinance for municipality. I will change that to. A resolution. If I can get a resolution number. You wanna approve the language of the ordinance. I'll put that onto a resolution template. Do you have?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty one to nineteen.
Nineteen.
Forty two thousand.
Then the actual sign version will be at the separate. But you're approving the language.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the language and the ordinance. For the closing of the railroad crossing located on Bunch of Roads. Railroad milepost eighty-nine point nine seven. And we will rewrite this into a resolution.
Twenty nine.
Twenty-two thousand nineteen. Always in. Aye. Aye. All of this. Time. Motion. So he'll get us a resolution made up and then we'll sign it. Give you the. We have that today.
Yes. I'm.
I'll start homework there. Or. Soon. I'll have. I'll see. I'll do that. I'll be the focus. The only other thing I. I don't know. We need to do. I don't know. Whether they're gonna send money. Send it to you. Send it to. Read that. No, I shouldn't see. So I've said the money. Back. I don't know if the county talks to you. Or the state cop. Or talk to you. I'm. I'm gonna send the money directly to you, I guess. Or the.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't. I don't know. We need that.
Don't need this, but if you just wanna acknowledge it. In the minutes that.
If the money is sent to the county and not to Barco Township. We'll. Careful. For. To you guys. Where we process. Good job. How about you?
Make sure to speak up.
We're finishing. We were finishing. The. On two fifty-eight. We started down Indian Hill. Outwork away. Back this way. We're gonna add some more. Stuff to some of the lower areas. Here are some dips. And stuff. There's a great amount of traffic. So we are just about done. We should finish up this afternoon. I was hoping to get a call from Bay. Get started. But. Since we already got everything prepped and ready. So. When we do the desk control. We are going to shut down all sections. All work. So we'll. They. Blackout on. Or. On. We will shut that completely down to allow for the spray dollars to go out. It's just gonna be. Can't worry. What we do.
Oh, it'll be closed.
Um, and Matt will probably have to refill the truck at least two or three times. So that stretch should be closed for about three to four hours.
So what we do like after maybe eight thirty, so eight fifteen. We're all.
We're gonna try to let the bus traffic.
And then. Back by the time they get back.
Yeah. So. That's the idea. Some of the stuff that we get labor. Get close to get done. We might be running through bus traffic. But if we're gonna do that, I'll let you know. And that's usually when you're getting towards the route. And you just want to get it finished up. And go ahead and get on to.
And that's usually when you're getting towards the route and you're just wanting to finish that and go ahead and get on to the next one.
Those are worried about people knowing one day that it was a day in advance, so they're not trying to go around that road.
Um, I will know about where we are and how far we get for the sprint. That's where we're going to hang up the sign today.
So we put a very close sign on it.
Yeah.
Not until local traffic, it would be good for.
So well, over here, just send them off down.
Yeah.
Available to set at the intersections they have.
Of course, the railroad does.
Get around hospital. Now, the other day when we were working those roads, they said that's too good. We had the water for where our flag was working, the cars were kind of long. Flags, some of them were, this beeline correctly, and some were probably even.
Yeah, somebody there that got lost. He hasn't come down that first, but it was time. He went past the U-turn there on California, it's like turned out there. He backed up several times, I'm sitting on him. And then I was just looking at it. Backs up, he pulled it. Said, where do I get out of this way?
It's been a long ass.
Hey, you'll lose one ride on that road this week.
It's day off.
A little bit right here, so.
So that's, that's where we're at. We're hoping to, I'm hoping to hear something soon. So we do have, it's probably going to be ten trucks.
I don't know that. I've gotten close to it, you're writing in the notes.
I think it's kind of. Do we not want to move? I'm not even sure. Ron, USC or something like that. The border town hall. You want to hang her out?
Yeah, we're going to hang her.
Christine Foster. How are you there? How are you today?
Oh, my God. Uh, I have a reservation. Our firm members are lined.
Without notice, it's over. We, I guess we probably didn't know so.
Um, and then this is a request to purchase another laptop printer that is the style used for motor vehicle. And the tags and things like that. We've got a couple that are, they're comfortable graphics, something, something, something. Herb is about to go out and we want to have a backup. They can replace those units, but like the printers themselves, there are. Sometimes they're visible, sometimes they're not, and then it just depends. So I don't want to be down to, that would be this. Possibly to the best one in every station.
There, we only got one bid.
It's on, we contract based, we live with the state. So that's basically our options.
Oh, this is the third motor vehicle.
Yeah, it's only a real vehicle. So this is what they require.
That prints your decals and stuff on your tag. Yeah, so it's.
We have that sort of printers for that.
Yeah. That's probably a special.
And you don't have an option, right?
Right, so this goes to.
This is the one they said that they had in stock.
And this goes to Logan Business.
Yes.
Yes, I can. Purchasing order thirty seven thirty one to Logan Business Institute for Lexon printer. The thirteen hundred dollars payable out of the charges from our vehicle. Second.
And then I didn't see the PVC on the agenda for today, but I think I have. Another updated bill for architects. Now it's one hundred forty one thousand, and I did the review of the contract and the stuff, it's part of the contract. I don't really want to do that.
Uh, we'll have to do it, probably. Does that recess real quick and do that recess open? We made a bunch of recesses.
Yeah, move to recess and just. That's such a open meeting. You can get the notice. Now of recessing. I don't think any.
Then so I'll make a motion to recess for ten minutes.
For ten minutes?
Five minutes, five minutes, we'll come back at. Bit of a while. All those in here, so I.
Hi.
I'll post it up. I have that much of a, I don't make a motion to open the meeting at public vote commission. I'm sorry, that motion is in call order, but right.
Okay, so this is the latest bill, one hundred forty one thousand, which is a cumulative total of their past bills, which was the ones that we had. Cream cheese and stuff from Panera and all of that. And so in the, in the contract, it says compensation for reversible expenses. Basic supplemental and additional services and include expenses incurred by the architect and the architect's consultants directly related to the projects as far as transportation. Long distance services permitting and other fees, printing, postage, expense for overtime work. Re-rendering physical models acquired by the owner, all taxes, site office expenses, registration fees. And other similar projects related fees.
This is the contract with Tom, 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 Tom.
Right, okay.
Reversible expenses are expenses incurred by the architect and their consultant at a zero percent. That's incurred or plus and zero percent, so they're not adding anything on to it. Um, and it does say things like the teleconferences and their vehicles, but it's only supposed to be for the. Architect and architec consultants, but.
So that's in that real.
The hundred forty one thousand.
Right.
That's the whole amount, that's the whole of those. In the budget breakdown, what's the full amount available?
Okay, they're working on schematics up there, so. Looks like forty seven dollars on that. It shows their term of access.
I still don't know where they got this extra six cents. Or something to ask it every time. I don't know how that got added on there, because I don't know that we ever approved that.
Right, so I'll make a motion to pay the one forty one five, one forty one five seventy five to CGA or GGA PC, architect. Second.
Hi.
I all close that sign. And that gets paid out of the.
So then I send that notification to the, would I need to bring this one down? Because I didn't want to go right now. And it's paid out of, because she's taking notes for the PVC, so this is being paid out. What is their name for the official fund you're using or? Uh, it's going to be paid from the Kansas City.
Right.
Not out of a county, okay, yeah. But I'll bring this one down where you sign.
Okay. That's all you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the PVC. Second. All those in here, so I. I do adjourn. So we have four minutes. Are you off?
Thank you.
I haven't counted last night.
Personally. Personally.
For personal.
P U R S L Y one? Okay, sorry.
No. I knew I was going to vote here if I didn't have, because I'm here with smoke a little bit. So we can't come back into open meeting until, not until, I can't, we never shut the camera off. We're just recessed.
We got three minutes.
Did you say recess?
For five minutes.
For five minutes, no, I think they. We can't, they didn't shut the cameras off and, did you say intelligent?
No, I just said five minutes. Sorry to say that.
I thought you said five minutes, and I couldn't hear nine fifty to nine fifty five.
Executive session.
Uh, so we're back and we're back from recess. Ron, come on up. It's Ron personally, right?
Yes.
Yeah, can you just sit there?
Yeah, sit there. Yeah, road concern. We asked Ryan to stay, Ryan.
Yeah.
Doesn't Ron, he's got a road concern on, on, you know, we'll talk.
Ron and I talked at the office the other day, I was in recognize.
Okay.
Problem I got is this road that comes up to my house. Township, everybody looking at the cameras, they have no records, it could be. So definitely they got any records, it's never been told. And about thirty five years ago, township family cleared branches that had grown up with the road. It's where, with the grave it come through. So I cleared all these trees out of this thing. The township heard a couple of whistles across the road, covered up. And anyway, the only people left alive on the township is Sam Wallace. And he remembers it, but the problem I got is, as I was saying, there's no record to be able to.
So where's the road?
It's shiny heights road, it's a half a mile north and it's going west.
And that's. Hallow North of sixty eight highway, and it goes back to the west. Used to be the old way, then you got the ring. The western side of that location was lowered down years ago. But the east side is still open, but it's overgrown, would have to be put back to a road standard. And then be a township road.
What's it considered right now?
It's, it's still an open road to the Hallow, where his property is.
Technically, legally, it's still considered open.
Yeah.
But they're not maintaining?
Well, they haven't been worried about maintaining. My neighbor to the south decided to put a new fence line north of the road. To where now I have, don't have access up to my house. And then when I talked to the title companies and they said it's an easement by description, even if he owned it or I owned it, but yet. Like I got my fence line down the head row on the north side. And there was a fence line on the south side of the road down the hill. And I got pictures and everything I'd like to look at, but instead of just maintaining or putting the fence. On the south side where the head row is, he just took over the roof. And I know a couple of weeks ago, I had to call nine one one. When his brother of the, came out, he called his brother and said, if you can unlock the gate with the ambulance to come on. And he said he couldn't do it. And so he ended up giving me a ride through the fields all the way down to the road by the mailbox.
So there's a fence and a gate and you can't get to your house?
There's a road all the way up to the house, but he's taken over it.
So the big question is whether the county has any improvement road easing. And you're saying it doesn't, there's no road records? Um, the road records would be pretty old. I don't know what they actually put in. But. Closed it, but. But they didn't necessarily vacate it? Yeah, they didn't close it sometimes.
This is Quinn though.
Where they have, again, how do you know it always have to be a personal?
Just a matter of where they put a fence across it. Still. This is my problem.
I always say everything, the big question is, well, they.
Both this and first one, maybe. Two miles worth of town coming up by half an hour.
So what, what do you mean when you say?
That's where my house is.
I'm.
This is here, you took, you put a fence on the north side, but that's where my house is.
They blocked it off.
Where's the block at?
Down at the gate, here.
Here?
Yes, to where a long time ago, it was a path to just way. I tried to put a gate up here, approach it to the house, but the county said I can't.
The county has a right of way, county act, whatever.
So I had to take my things down. But do you have a school up here that says everything?
Or was it originally a county road that was conveyed to the township, I'm not sure.
So this is, nobody's got that. That's sixty highway, are you up here?
Oh, here you are, right here.
Yeah, and that's the road.
This is ours, walk.
This is. I got to come right up here and I'm going to build and everything, and I even got pictures of. I mean, I think if I ask him, I go, bring the first to this. And you did all this work that I did to tear a road up to your house. And the time, like, we go through the field, get to the house, to your house, I go, would you like it? And he goes, no. And so I got, throw my hands up and did that until.
So this road from here.
Basically, they can't get this out. Okay. Yeah. If you get off the road, here's what he's talking about. So you want the streets there.
But you could see, like, you could.
What are you like?
Well.
Yes.
And where does he have the area?
Because the gate clear down here, but the problem is too, it's got the fence. He put a fence down just the north side of the road to where I can't even, like right here, where the gate used to come into work, coming to the house. Yes, I know this, this here part here.
So this part, do you got where he got that?
He said he heard it.
The gate that it got removed. And.
And this is how you get to your house?
Well, that's how I used to.
My thing is, is my dad has a bunch of health issues, and if the ambulance can get further to get to my dad, something's going to happen.
So the township doesn't maintain this road here, no?
Well, those are what you put the gravel down, you put the whistles.
I mean, that's like, looks like a low pound.
Well, I, I noted, but yeah, they have a maintenance, since they put the gravel, it's all kind of.
So where is your property? Is your property here on the west coast?
You're on the north side.
So here's, here's his house, and it looks like there's that used right now.
Well, it's put up in my middle.
So why does he think, why does he think he has the authority?
He told me I had to get it surveyed.
Oh, he thinks it's on his property?
But he didn't ever get it surveyed either. But here's a, like you say, you can't see the gravel. But here's a picture of where the fence you put on the north side of the road. And this is like how I'm having to go through to get up to my house, and it rained and everything else. I know this picture's on the other side here too, like with the snow. Couple of years ago or whatever, and I've been for almost nine months trying to talk to him. Here's a very particular, I just wanted to show you, to where it's coming up. You can see where the gravel, where the fence line, where the gravel road used to come up, and that's where they did that. It goes all the way through. Here's another of a map showing where it is in nineteen seventy one. Here's another of the map showing where it is in nineteen seventy-one. Direct route and where's the road comes up to where the house is.
That road isn't, his road is not closed, only, only the west end.
Right.
So the road that he has, that's obviously not be closed up. Because the road is not.
Well, it sounds like the dispute is he thinks that the property one, he thinks the road is on the other gentleman's thing, the road is on his property and that's why he's.
Here's another picture of where the fence line where it should be for the head row. And he moved it up over the, you know.
The county, the county thinks that the fence may be in the right way, road in the right of way.
Right.
The county, and it wants to enforce its. Rights to keep that clear. Um, it will need to hire a survey, just I would want some both road records and an actual survey to determine where the fence is.
But his road is a township road that he lives on?
Yes.
So where's the township in this?
Well, it would ultimately be township maintained, but I think the county would still maintain. Even in township road system, the county still maintains.
The survey.
Well, and the, and right of way. We don't convey.
So any road there, you see that it's faded off, will they have a survey?
Yeah, because.
The road's there, it's plain as. To, to have some legal footing to send out a letter for them to remove that gate. County, although they're gonna go out there and remove the fence, I would wanna make sure that we.
Well, I don't think we would have.
Well, I mean, I think he's, I, I even offered to help him.
I think you're talking land.
But see, this is the old fence line I said. And it's behind the head row and he can be clear up and.
So do you go over to answer that?
If, if there's no dispute in. Uh, right of way. The next step would be to get any records we have regarding the road record of the original plan or whatever. I mean, if it was the main road going in the. Final question. I would, I also wouldn't mind having the resolution that closed the, the, the east side, the west, west area.
But as we're backwards, the rest, the point of the east side, the west side is where it goes up to my.
The west side? Yeah. I think the east side, when I checked, I think the east side is still an open easement area going up to the house about my line.
Those were yours, the unit.
And I think the west end was actually reported.
Yeah, that's what you're matching. So this is the east side here.
This is the east side?
See here, frame of county line?
Yeah.
So this is the east side. Your castle. And this must lock, this must be the close.
Well, it's just like here's.
It's a path.
Well, this is the road that goes further.
Yeah.
It seems like, it used to be a school there a long time ago. And they closed it. Well, this is. But I just wanna show you. What I'm gonna show you is. The fence line needs to be down.
Right.
And he just took it. Fence has not even got it going down.
Shows where, where it is, so we have something to stand on.
Yeah.
So anyways.
Now you can see on this one here, but.
Yes, I would recommend. Some second.
Two.
Because that makes a difference. The right of way is still there, but we just closed it.
Okay, so. Yeah, well, I just worked on my sort of resolutions and I have one week, ten days, two weeks. I'll have to see how long the case is that I'll, I'll try to get a hold of.
Yeah.
I'd say maybe revisit mid-September.
Yeah, but in the meantime, like I said, the ambulance couldn't come up to me. And like the one path getting through my fields and everything, I just can't get there. I just, like, it's an easement by description, even if he owned it.
Prescription? Could it be by prescription?
Description.
Description.
Because you can see it, and I went to the title companies and those ones who told me that it's an easement by description.
The only thing that's, that does is affects your private rights with him. And so you, the question is whether the county has legal footing to take action on behalf of the county's rights? Or do you have to go to district court to force him to move the fence? You're saying that he, if, if you can show him that it's in the middle of a right of way, he ain't able to, anyway?
He's not gonna do anything. Yeah, he kicking me off and trying to pressure up on me, saying that I was on his property, which that's the road I am.
We need to have solid legal footing and then you may be in a position where somebody's gonna send a letter or something potentially. So you need to have the attachment script to include a survey.
When did he, when did he put the gate up? Why?
Um, I just, um, I don't know, maybe like two years ago, I don't know.
How have you accessed your house?
I'm showing pictures. I'm going through the field up to the pasture, it's muddy, they go to the mixing strip.
What's that? The mixing strip, do you use that route or something to get in there or just across?
I've just gotta go take you all the way up to the fields to get right next to the road where my house is. And I mean, it's muddy and everything and they tearing their cars up because of the ditches and everything else. I can't even get people to come up to see me. I.
This is bizarre to me, so I feel like.
We're not having a torch, right? Just me first, I can't say.
Well, but if it's.
I know it would be worse than.
Yeah, I got a map showing the road.
If it's a road that's not closed, I don't know why the township's not maintaining it, except I guess if the gate's up, they can't.
Well, that's, but don't you say any reason. What's that?
It's been pretty bad shape for a long.
That's north of the highway, north of my land. That's another road that ain't been maintained and you can drive through. But there's no dispute as it being a, you know. A road. But they haven't maintained it at all. But this part here, it ain't even me asking them to maintain it. I just wanna have access to drive, because that's a full good solid foundation and I can mow the grass and everything else. And, um. I mean.
Have you ever been driving around this in two years?
No, I just got back in October. Oh, okay. So that's why I've come to move it, but I've been discussing this with him since October. I've tried to get with attorneys, if they want ten thousand dollars and everything else. And I went to the township meeting, I went up to the road department, I went to land management, I went to the easement. I'm back to deeds, doing everything. Well, they said there's no records of being a road. But yet, that's why we got this map to where, I guess this was the road before they started. Doing records. But you could.
Who said the township sent its note in our records?
The township and the county both.
I think the one map I've ever read was, uh, in the twenties. Twenties or thirties, fifty miles. Or when you get to actually see the road and the old school on that. Well, but the road, the flat, the original road records are. Especially with the main borough area defending. That's gotta be in the initial county.
Yeah. And that's the section line, so it's. Okay.
This is it here. This is some sort of a directory for seventy-one, and it shows. But he says that's his. That, I don't know what's called range seventeen, township, it's dated eighteen ninety-nine, I don't include the town.
Did, there's a register of these. How, how is yours?
He said there used to be a schoolhouse right there. On the corner down here. And now. Basically, this part is.
That's that school too, but that.
They said.
Moving on, it wouldn't be that close. Every, every two miles stagger.
Well, I know.
So it would be two miles. I, my question is, is if this is still a legal road in the county, how would someone have authority to?
Well.
That he thinks it's.
So he has, has, has no one lived there for a while and then he just came back?
It is maybe, but I think we do the house.
So he has. So he put the gate up when.
Yeah, but here's a, like. I don't know if he can't see the. Where that's, the school that's down at Cameron again. I just took a picture of the map that he had. Get a video of that mask. And you can see where the road is there. I was told that used to be the old road to go to Landon before the, the new sixty-eight highway.
Other side of the hill is.
Yeah. Right. Right, wow. Right.
So you just need to find some records.
So here's a.
Right, this area.
This question is, can he, can he lock?
You know, that the head row. That's. But that's the major. Well, that's, that side of the fence, I mean, all of this is hard, but just here going down this side of the road, that's the ditch. Because on the north side, where we got the.
Which side is the north side?
This side over here.
This side?
Yeah. You got the south side, that's the road, but this ditch I'm going all the way down to the whistle. Because we've got two whistles going under the road for the water to go, you know, without water to the water river. And I can't drive up the ditch, I mean, you, you run all the way over to where the ditch is.
And yeah, I think it served, I think, two things, find the road records. You definitely need to get the, of the center line.
Right.
And, and the width and then have a surveyor use that to look at what it is and then. Right.
And I mean, I'm the only one who needs to actually drive up the road to get to the house, because he has nothing but cattle on his side.
Okay, so. Which is why you want. But your section town.
Seven?
Yeah.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Where his cattle was still in there.
So where is it? Has it moved?
The fence.
Yeah. Got the picture of.
His fence will probably be on the edge of ours.
And so. Do you see your boy?
So he wells the new fence. Okay, so. Where the fence over.
And he encompassed the whole road with the fence now, so he can't access.
Because his fence wasn't right there.
So what can we do to help him to be there? There's no way. We can't go open the gates.
No, I mean, at some point you're gonna need to inform the landlord that. He may be transgressing on, on a county right of way, road, road right of way. And, uh. I'd rather have records.
And if you'd look to power lines coming up to the house, it's just right there by my fence line. And then there's a telephone line, and that's how they come up the road where they used to fill my propane tank. And like, I used to have a gate, but the township said I couldn't put a gate because it's a township road. But they came up and stole it while I wasn't there, my propane tank. They stole all the wiring and plumbing out of the house and everything else, broke all the windows. So I'm restoring it, not in the state of the camp, it's like almost two months. Trying to work on to get the house, I mean, material and everything else is. Well, all I'd like to be able to immediately is good. I mean, because I was. The, the last week, I cut it and I just moved it. And he said I was breaking a knee and I don't get property. But I could buy the gate back out of town, we told them, but the cows don't get out, but still let that, let me come up to the house. I got a bent ass and anything I get from that.
So you got.
Clear down at the end by the gates. Where I got it. Trying to walk down there and I jumped that gate, picked my stuff up, carried all the way back. I mean, it's like I said, even the ambulance, you wouldn't even know about the gate. But the ambulance.
Your house. Is there a fence on it?
There's a fence there, but right there by my house, it's like a gate where I used to come out of my yard.
So is it on your driveway?
By, the fence line right by my house. To where I mean, it's.
Now, my, my question is, can you drive out of your driveway onto that old basement?
Yes.
And if you drove out of there, you could drive down to that fence, you just can't get through it.
Well, the only thing that's keeping me from doing it right now is the fence that he got on the north side of the road.
That's the question, is he gotta, you test him?
Yeah, I can't.
So you can't come out of your driveway?
A second, no. I disconnected part of the. All right, fence has moved it, I put my mower through there and I got it all over. But you can see the gravel on one picture as well.
So I need, I need you to somehow submit everything that you have that you brought today. Pictures, maps, description of maps, like where you took that picture, if one owns it, tool on it, all of that. Get a package together, putting those, give it to Ryan.
Yeah.
And then we'll get him scanned in and we'll start working on it, but it's, something like this is, uh, it's not gonna be immediate.
And I'm not gonna argue, you know, winter time again, I'm like before winter, because I got snowed in up there, you know.
Yeah.
My kids can't get to me. I'm the only one up there that actually needs access to the road to get up there, because he doesn't even use that road over there. He comes in from the, by sixty-eight high and he drives on up there and goes down my road. Our, our road, the county road, township road, and checks the fence line all the time. I mean, it's like ten feet from my house. Well, I'd say twenty feet.
Yeah.
But the camera's closer to the road, but. I mean, I do everything, he can take it all right now, but the opposite, then I could come back and pick up the rest, I mean, I just. I feel like if there's no records, your eyes, a picture tells a thousand stories to where you can see that there was a road.
Well, yeah. It could have been an easement.
It could have been.
Vacated, and yeah, it could have been driveway. We don't know.
That's what happened to.
But I just know the maps shows that I got.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I just had, I mean, I don't want to get physical. I mean, I'm trying to do everything, you know, and like I even told him, I asked him, if we first did, if he liked it? And he said no, so then definitely, I mean, I threw my hands up, well, then what's. If you wouldn't like it, then why are you doing it to me?
My thing is, is my dad does have a lot of bad health issues and he can't get an influence from, I mean, something happens to him. I mean, that's me losing my father asset.
Well, my blood pressure is two forty-five to one forty-five. And they took me to the hospital, but in order for me to get to the end, I had to go all the way up through the field. Go all the way down the road by the mailbox. And it was his brother that signed me that gave me the ride. And he called his brother up and asked if he could not like the gate and his brother said no. And so from that point, even like if I had one of those life boards or whatever, you do maps and everything shows where, that's a map going up to the road. I'm the only, I'm the only wizard you need to go to. All right, well, I appreciate your time and everything.
All right, thanks for having me.
He had recommended that all the stuff you have, if he could get it drawn and he'll get it scanned in and that way all that stuff will be in one.
It would be particularly helpful if you took everything. And if there's any notes or anything that I need to know while researching the records, you write it out or something like that, just so we know the context of the picture.
Okay, yes. I don't have any transportation, that's what's part of my problem, I mean, because I can't get the family to even come up to me. And I always gotta walk all the way down there. I got, I'm on Medicare and my transportation.
So what are you saying here, you wanna leave it today or?
Well, I mean, if not, I don't know when I'll link it back to my.
Because I have to drive all the way down.
You can, you can continue.
What's your, do you have a contact number?
Yes. Yes, nine one three, three zero six, oh seven five nine. And the address is two six four, nine five, South Johnny High Road.
Right, you have time to meet with him just to make that contact.
And your first?
Who is Ron Burris, what is his name?
If you know.
P U R S L A Y?
Sometimes they call them. But I, I appreciate everything, I mean, it's just, you know, common sense, it seems like, and down here, it seems like we're wanting to help each other instead of making a problem.
We'll do that.
All right.
And then as far as, you guys just get back to me?
Yes, as we kind of work through this.
I sent Ryan caves this survey.
Have to kind of keep the update on what we're finding now.
See where would be the best place to.
He's been helping, but I think some of it's out of his hands. And that's why they advised me to come, like even the township said that you guys owe them to come to the county's, uh, county commission, which is why I'm here.
You go along, he's gonna get this stuff there and get, or go right, it's more reasonable.
Well, I appreciate you spending the time, thank you.
Sarah Heard.
No one's gonna be. Is it personal? Personal, so probably ten months? Long time. That's what I'm asking, how long do we need?
We can start with ten minutes.
So we got six months, seven months before the meeting.
I would start with ten and see where it's at. You don't have to cover, I happen to have covered.
I'll make a motion to go to exactly the section of the public section that kids are going to read, Zach. It's not a, not a like a personal matter, exception to the status personal matters, it's not a like a personal. Type the rights and powers of individuals, all for ten minutes. I say nine twenty, or ten twenty-five, coming back at ten. Second.
Can you say? Hey, Ron, uh, after I've got the reason, I'm gonna knock out that resolution, obviously, you know.
If you just give me like a sign, I will let you know that upstairs is.
Sounds good, I, I'll, I'll be, we can do it whenever, before they.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. How's everyone doing?
Is Becky here?
Yeah.
Texas State.
I don't have her number, but I'll call her. Does break come?
That is. Good morning, everyone. How's everyone today?
You guys move up.
It's kind of hard for you.
I know, but we have.
We're gonna take out all these chairs.
Come up here.
I can't see you back there. I put my glasses on. Let's just start with Jeff. Jeff, tell us what's up.
This business as usual. I do have the bid coming in for the elevator phone. She's supposed to be on that this afternoon. We'll get that for you.
Is that something that the fire marshal's office had been doing?
That was the Tyson Group elevator had put in. There is a phone. He said next year he will have an inspector with him and that will be a violation. So it would be move us to go ahead and get that installed now so that we can do with that next year. So it's a compliance issue on that.
Are they giving you any kind of idea what this? Can't put a cell phone in there? So you put phone in, doesn't that work?
I think that's the intention, yeah.
Get one of those, one of those.
Yeah.
What else? No other issues? We got?
Do they say where the ladies are at?
Yeah. Do we get everything cleaned up on floor four after the roof got repaired?
There's been no workers inside the office. I think that.
We'll just go right on to you, Kelsey.
I think one of you had a hand that you had reached out to somebody and told them to come look. But I don't remember. Nobody is.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
Well, I talked to Gary DeFries and he was supposed to come look at it, but he had someone else in mind to do flash.
I would almost bet you, honey, that come winter time, I'll have thought if people wrote like this.
Yeah.
They're both in them, yeah, so.
Is all, I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember where we left it. If I was meeting to contact people or Jeff or you guys.
I think well.
Is this a project we could kind of give to Jeff to start looking at and he could determine who might, who might be the appropriate people to come look at it? And it's, I think it'd be good if somebody in house could point person to manage that.
I'm fine.
Are you okay with that? And then you kind of work with Kelsey. She can help identify all the areas.
There's some that will probably just get formed up, fucked up.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the reference room, I think the next year we're gonna have a push to get all of those records back in possibly by outside stores. Because right now they would really just be in the way for any amount of fixing and painting. But just my office is something that.
So since the new roof has been installed, we know issues, right?
Same, no, no treatments.
I know your carpet bill, you've had a little problem trying to find somebody. So I did talk to one of your guys that was looking at it. And one of the issues they had was in the office.
There's a lot of unknowns.
Right, because the office has a bunch of thoughts and they're like, I didn't hear one, but Debbie and that or something?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a rubber banking, like what the Fraser's office have in there.
And he goes, I don't know if I could put that anywhere. I mean, he said, I can't tell you what it would cost to put down. I said, whatever, we'll see where we're at.
Yeah, so right now I only have the one bid still, even though I've had three people.
And that's for materials and label?
So Debbie across the street, she only bids the materials. She has a company, an installer that she works with, but she's not exclusive with them in any way. So they gave a bid for install and then Debbie gave the bid for materials. I had a company out of our neck come look and they politely declined. Just because I think it is a large job. And then over. Yeah, he came and I have met with him a couple of times and said he was waiting to get some others back on material. I really just wish he'd give me at least an insult because I have these.
That's what I told him. I said, you don't want to do it. Just do it. It's all good.
So I, my dad asked where I expected to be two weeks ago, so I was out of the office for a couple weeks, so I hung on this week trying to reach out to more, trying to locate a few more installers to see and they would come look. But I think the person that Debbie has, I think they may have been the same people that the Fraser's office, so they're at least somewhat familiar.
Do we have their bid or?
I do. I do have their bid. I haven't given any, I haven't turned any of them in because I was hoping to have a couple of them.
Right.
Show that his bid, he still has a bid, but within that bid, it does still say that he has not, there's none of that bid. Uh, because they don't know what a little bit.
Right, right. But the courtroom, they don't have that problem. It's just where the office is.
It is a, Jeff and Bob actually explored a little bit where the P's are and I think that's a four and four. So I don't know that there would be as much prep there. It's the office where there's, I think there's tile underneath and they'll probably all pop up and take it back.
Somebody can say, tell them to put that.
If I think that whole way, that whole corner in the office is going to be asbestos. So when I think that's what probably has those guys kind of stepped back a little bit. That gets into a whole disposal and all of that. So that may require offices being closed maybe for a period of time or something like that.
So I guess at this point, Tom, I guess we can get. Are they bidding up by the room or is it all the others going?
It is, it's all on one bid that you can't tell which is which. It's part of the, the install bid is kind of separate since you know, install and corporate install here. The bid for Debbie itself, it's just different for each group, so you can tell.
So I guess my question is, is it all, if we did the courtroom. Does it all have to be done at one time until we do? Because it's got to be pretty expensive, I think. If I'm remembering correctly, I was thinking it was around twenty thousand for materials.
I can go get the bid. I think initially when I just, I had not picked out a floor, I had just said, just give me a high number. I just want to know if we're even somewhere in the realm. It was in the twenty twelve, twelve year.
Would you grab that and bring it out? We will want to make a comment in case there's more good that we can look at.
When we pulled up the old tile in the Fraser shop, it's not asbestos. So you can't always tell by looking, so don't, you know.
The courtroom being a fourth floor, that would be something that would be relatively simple for Bob and I to do through Bob's years of experience. And that's just for carpet tiles. That's pretty simple.
You think?
So we can take that out of the bidding process and simply just narrow that right down.
So you think you can install the top?
I am not a hundred percent certain.
Yeah. So we need to. The next time costs a lot. That's something we could get that out and then start.
Yeah, we could eliminate that out of the bidding process. I think Bob and I could.
Yeah, they did a good job in my.
Bobby's done a very thorough.
Yeah.
And his brother also, so. Pam, we'll go to you while we're.
Okay, they're finishing up rope of the senior center. And I think were you, were you gonna contact the more people? We still were having problems with the door.
I was not able to contact them last week and I don't know about this week. I'll give you the number though.
I got, I got the one, but I got the one to one, but not the other one. So if you have the other one, that might be. And then we could probably see what we're gonna do on that because it's still not right. Other than that, we have the transportation, the lift bus, that the mechanics finish, should be done next week, week after. So. So I am supposed to invite not just Fred, but the other two also, which I know you will be able to count it. The first Wednesday of the month, we have Bob Black.
How do you know about it?
Well, I tried to have a interview.
Well, on my show anyway.
Well, I'm supposed to invite the guy specifically. This is from Joe, so Fred can explain that to you.
I just sent you his contact.
Okay, thank you.
Right. I guess we were just talking earlier.
Yeah.
You have any more great things to add?
Let's see. Yes, we're in the finalization. I did the rest of the plan acquisitions for the big bridges. Those were all the bridge bomb programs. So I think we have two more to come through and that should be all finalized if we go in for a letting later on this fall. So we utility, I already have their plans and stuff. I've reached out to AT&T. Reached out to Line Coffee. They've got them plans to get there. The utilities moved out of the way of these bridges. Energy, they were a couple of energy and Greece they were getting back a hold of me. So I know it's pretty hard to catch lately at the office. So let's see, Dustin Troy has been ordered for the route. The L16 with the G thirty one project being down. So roads have been prepped and they should be finished. They were discussed earlier. Pillow construction finished our last portions that we had over the way. There east of on Sixth Street was our last area that they had to get to. As you know, we have got three miles off this year due to budget constraints. Which is, is not favorable, but making sure things will be ready for a bit probably. And then submitted four more bridges to the state with the, with the first funding assistance. Pick kind of the worst of the worst, trying to bump us up higher by four fish. The bridges were pretty low rated and stuff. And then put the option in there that we can close a couple of bridges that are past, I'm gonna fix them that really don't go anywhere. And sometimes that makes us higher up on the list. This year the state wants to do one instead of the eighty twenty. They want at least one of their select bridges be a void compensated up to a man. So I've been in a couple longer bridges that are leading the end of their lifespans. So hopefully if we can get on that list to get selected, the repair big county to have a whole bridge paid for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I.
How about the soybean people? We get it, we get that all organized up. What's that? With the soybeans, people that were gonna get money for a part of.
Yeah, we get ten dollars a dollar for a bridge during March of burning game. You know, for that one, the engineer. Raven, Cleveland, with the soybean information.
Yeah, it was one of.
I'll come back to you last.
So we now have.
Miss Amanda.
We now have eleven applications have been turned in and appraised and ready to go for the neighborhood revitalization program. As you guys passed the down payment assistance program not too long ago at North West Cities. To get that so far, Quinamo and Burlingame have returned their official signed resolutions, but I do expect a lot more that just turned around slowly. Burlingame did approve their land bank. I got that through. We held a ribbon cutting for Horst Kitekrast in London and that went well. And then the website, so I continue to work with Civic Plus. You guys will all be receiving, they can have a work date. You'll all be receiving some information from me pretty soon and then we'll try to schedule a time so we can decide what you want and what we can change now sort of automatically if you go or you must work later. So they're gonna have our site completely migrated on September nineteenth. So it's not up. It just means they'll have it migrated. So anything, any changes made after the nineteenth to our website will have to also make on the new website. That would be changed. I've been working with the Basta community and the post office, which we'll discuss more at eleven. Then of course, wind energy has been a thing. We had one couple here and we'll have another one. And see that's.
That's, that's the end of this month, isn't it?
Yes, on the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, that's in which it's.
It's at the senior center. Yeah. And then, so in my interest, we're almost completed for Carbonale to get their housing development. So we'll leave a bit of extension funds and I'll go across that. Then tonight, there is a event in Burlingame, Hideout, it's the whole sewing factory in the corner, very end of Santa Fe. There, it, it will be a speaker, Andrew Craig, and it's about a total company or total town name, but Bernie talks about a lot of people. Volunteering and keeping volunteers and community engagement, not just, not just the town. So it's great for everyone. I'm participating, I'm fifty people there tonight, we'll see. Then I've been attending meetings in Coffee County. There is a new chip act that just came on from the Biden administration. And it does have some hospital advantage, so it's County for size. I've worked with several towns on broadband, either brand or install, and working with types of companies. So hopefully some from that soon. There's a new historical display of, of the county at the courthouse out here. It'll be here for about six, four weeks. I believe if anyone's interested in checking that out, thanks to the Historical Society. I attended the heart of the Quinno, Santa Fe Trail chapter meeting and got nominated as the, and I did volunteer as the, to be a board member. So I'll represent Osage, Osage County, which I think is fitting for my position. And then they give permission to host their next meeting on October thirteenth here in the courthouse in this room. Everyone is welcome. If you're interested in learning about stores and upcoming symposium, that's actually gonna be in. Not much more to be on. Yeah, well, it's gonna be, yeah, password, but it's still part of our chapter and so we helped put it on. So both these county stuff will be there. So that'll be exciting. And then I have been working with Perkins Coog, who is a new real estate company who is opening a new location in Osage City. Next, or this upcoming center who have their ribbon cutting. But we're gonna have a home improvement award that I'm in conjunction with them, that people will be able to submit pictures before and afters. And we'll, then we'll do it annually and, and get a celebration, people doing part work on the property. Assisted with the financing and grants and we're gonna get a dishealth course in Burlingame. So pretty soon, hopefully be able to take over Orion, Lion Counties. They're, they're claiming to pay for their dishealth because I think almost every town will have one by then. So that's pretty much, that's another stuff. It's pretty much most of it.
Thank you. The meeting tonight.
Andrew Gray.
Is regarding.
Anyone wants to come, you just put as the speaker that Brad brought in. And anyone who wants to come, it's gonna be talking about communities and, and giving examples of how we grow our communities and then different aspects of all the dream.
He's very entertaining and that is open for anybody.
Anybody. So first twenty five registrants to get a book that would definitely ask, be able to go and ask, sorry, you can just come and happy.
So no worries about running out of.
No, there's four in the network. There's a lot of thirty seats set up, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm working on the gathering of materials, budgetary delegates for next year's. I have. I'm watching the CIC conference, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday. I suggested a report so that we give us some information so that we can keep, you know, monthly to on our expenditures. We can get, we can make sure we get. When we run payroll this, this next time, the developer rules should, the PTO rules should be active, that should be popping up in the time clock. We are waiting for time clock plus to meet with us and we can, I can start training with the management on how, you know, how they show the time clock.
On the mobile app. Mobile app. Yeah, the mobile app, yeah. And anything else? We've got some job postings out there. Everybody, please be sure and check the website and, and indeed. And we also have applications here at the courthouse if anyone wants to apply for a job, our job postings are listed by the application if they want to know what jobs are open. And they can fill out the application if you're online or they can fill it out here. There's a job box on the tower office store that is confidential online, so if you put your material.
Okay. Thank you. The infamous new value, Matt, who's, who's always hitting something.
Yeah. So the Fraser office has been busy out in the field. We've got two thirds of our seventeen percent annual rate inspection done. Open to wrap that up by the end of September. It might go into the first week of October. In the meantime, along with those, we've also been out in the fields catching up six months of sales onsite, physical inspections for properties that have sold. We got those caught up as of last week. We're out on our last call on Friday. So those are all, that would be a relief not to have to jump all over the town and try and get some progress. Keep those about a maybe four weeks per week that we'll be out on, so. Another thing that's new in our office is we no longer contract out the analysis. I do that in-house now. Catch you guys up on that. I've done the narrative analysis, got it completed. Did my land market analysis study, it's completed. And this, that, we also have some new commercial matrix come in, which is an expanded matrix in our system that allows us to rank properties' functionality and physical condition. They expanded that, gave us more options to choose from. Hopefully that will help us giving values for commercial properties. Able to zero more in on the actual physical condition of having to compare two properties that are pretty different, but all done the same thing. Also, I got my land trim analysis done and I'm about halfway through our residential land analysis. So we're right on schedule for where I was with my account. So that looks good.
How's our land looking?
Everything looks good. I will tell everybody, probably expect the values not to go down. Land looks like it's going up. There'll be, there'll be some changes. Some of our land values are all worth the work. And I think overall the county for different, I'm not seeing differences in towns. Like we have in the past, they're all coming more closer together to what the town land values are, should be.
The border sales numbers like this, is there more houses selling this year than?
Yeah, yeah. We, in the six months that we were catching up, we had well over a hundred sales.
Okay.
And I say six months, there were two or three sprinkled in from the game. And I say six months, there were two or three sprinkled in from January, but where the most were a three month window, so, so, yeah.
So we run about 200 a year, I think, so that's.
Yeah, I think you're probably gonna be, if you have houses, you can probably be over that. The market's just really pinching right now, there's a lot out there. But I do look forward to slow down, if you expect climbing up. That doesn't affect the cash transactions, so.
Right, did you get the core of the one?
I did not, I will get it back in, is that, and I was working.
I don't know if you know the answer to this other aspect of this, but do we know what the number of new houses are that we've built from the county last year?
No, we should be able to figure that pretty easily. It's, we calculate that as part of the truth and taxation statement, isn't it, Ron? New housing values or new construction values?
Oh, it's in, it's in, it's on the, it's for each entity. He's always talking about.
Yeah, I think I've got it pulling in as a county goal.
Well, I have it on the county sheet, I was thinking about that.
Thank you. All right, Chelsea.
Here's these numbers.
So did everybody tell Bob and Jeff that they volunteered for taking off job? Jeff knows, but.
Jeff and Bob have been really great. They actually, it's, it's part of this, when we, they pulled up a corner of the floor. Oh, I'm sorry, they pulled up a corner of the flooring in the courtroom. And that's when we realized it was a floor floor. So I think our hope would be that if we got the bid approved to do the flooring in the courtroom. And we knew that there was money there, if we pulled up the old carpet and there was a big blemish in it, that we wouldn't be able to replace it. But our hope is that we can actually kind of restore that, where the pews are, back to the old court floor. That it was originally, it stained like, it's like the marble or whatever, like. Once in the hallways on the walls, it stained like a deeper red. Our hope would be that we could restore that and not have to lay carpet back over it. But we would, of course, want, if the option is there, at that point, if we were able to restore it. We may have to spend some money that we would have used for carpeting on some sound panels, just to help with the echo in the courtroom. But I would think it would be less than the actual cost of carpet and then install. But that's the only bits I've got back so far.
This is substantially less than what was.
Yeah, it's almost $9,000 less once we picked up the actual.
So somebody in the bathroom, the focal carpet up?
So behind the bar, we could call it that. So in front of the bar where the council tables are, that flooring we know would have to be replaced. Because 10 years ago or 12 years ago now, when the cable was done, they actually trench down into that floor to lay a lot of cabling. So we know that has to be carpeted over, it's got a big trench in there. But behind the bar where all of the pews are, we pulled up, Jeff and Bob were exploring and pulled up a corner. And it's a stained hardcore, like almost like.
So you're thinking it would look carpeted back down?
If it was nice, if it was in as good a shape as it appears to be, and we can get the adhesive off of it. And then if we thought acoustically we could make it work, maybe with some nice sound boards. Yeah, the idea would be that we would just leave it. Because right now, part of our problem on that carpet is that it's just gross. Because people come in with muddy shoes, they come in, you know, it's harder to maintain. We have all that traffic factor in this piece, so a hard floor would certainly be easier to take care of.
So how often do you have four?
We have four, nearly four days a week, there may be.
I'm asking that because if you take the carpet up to see what the floor is like. And then I'm assuming she's got to order the materials.
Yes, so, right, we know there may be some overlap of having, well, I think our thought was we would take it up and strip in the back. And kind of, and then piece our way forward if we get that approval, but.
To look and see what.
To look and see what it looks like, but yeah, we are aware that there may be a time period between a construction, so.
After being up in that courtroom, there are no doubt that it is flooring. I mean, it's horrible, I don't know whether you take buttons up and see what the hardwood and make sure whatever, I mean, it's, it's not good.
Yeah.
That meaning, no, that's one of the comments that was made by several people throughout this discussion, that is a.
It really is, and it's unfortunate because it's old enough and dirty enough because of the age that like I had an attorney spill water on it. And it created a stain because it almost created.
It's not surprising, it's not a problem. I don't know where to go.
The office really isn't much better. I think, yeah.
I don't have a problem with the motion that we have Jeff and Bob pull up a section and start saying what that floor was like, it's something we can say or not. I can tell you now, I don't have a problem with doing the courtroom part right now, because I think we can budget that in pretty easy. And that one has the last of the amounts. And it can be fixed pretty quick, because that's something you guys said you could do, so we're looking at the cost of materials, so. I mean, if we need a motion to do that, I don't have a problem with that motion, I don't think so. And here's the number, what they're looking at is right there, there, that's.
This is the court.
Yeah, leave the bottom off, the office is not, you see that.
Well, I was thinking they wanted to explore first and see.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I want to give a motion to tell the floor, I've checked a little bit. They may notice that the floor is not worth saving, they're gonna need to learn more material. Right. Now, if they deem that the floor is soundable, then we don't need to worry about materials. So I would make, yeah, I would make a motion that we approve tearing up the old carpet in the courthouse, section or however you want to do it. And if found to be not good, that we go with all the floors and order. The carpet they have on here in the amount of 99, 25, 98. And the blue in the amount of 780. There won't be any other, because we're gonna do it with our guys, so, but if they need a little extra, that's like 10, 7, something. I'll just make a motion to go up to no more than $12,000. That's what I was saying, yeah.
I think that there is labor for the courtroom. On that labor bid, because I.
Yeah, I'm not even looking at this bit, because we don't need their, the labor, but all I'm looking at is the bit from materials, that's all we need is true, right? Yeah.
Well, I don't know about yet, we're planning on replacing the carpet, should it be replaced? I think they were comfortable tearing up.
Okay, I thought they were putting it back down, okay.
That's a possibility.
Well, to start with, let's see what we got. And the motion would be to roll the materials, because it's gonna take a while to get the material, I'm sure. And then in that time, we'll figure out what's under that. So my motion is we, from distant courtroom up to 12,000 dollars for the carpet and the removal of what's there and see what we got. So all those.
What funds are we applying?
This will come out of the courthouse.
General courthouse.
No, it came out of the, the.
The which one?
Yeah. Yeah, because this is part, so, to make that motion, get this out of the. All those, I, I also sent a motion there.
You can keep those.
So yeah, Jeff, if you guys can get started on that, because we will get back here. Next month, and then we're back there on the first. So maybe by then, we'll know what we got. And maybe it's something that's probably not fair to make the rest. Weekend and pay them extra. Yeah, right.
I think that, you know, behind the bar is apparently straightforward floor, but above the bar, it's, you know, stairs.
I cannot believe you guys are not at the bar. I didn't know, I did not know that you have not worked, how much are the terms?
They even tell me that you should be able to smoke in the courtroom, but you can only smoke while questioning a witness. So sometimes you didn't have any questions, they could be available.
That is not.
I have a couple things, I'm gonna cast these out, you'll take one, some of them I already seen this, but. This is something that Miami and Atchison County had put out that. We would like to pursue doing, and it may involve each of your departments and your input. So if you guys will take these and look over and see what information from your office might be beneficial, but. Basically, the top says, understanding your county budget and real property taxes for, this one's from Miami County. But if you guys will take these and kind of look over it, and then at our next month's meeting, if you, we'll maybe revisit it and talk about what information from your department would be beneficial. But they've got front and back, but it really breaks down the budget according to departments. And then the back has like each department and different projects that have been completed throughout the year. So as we're trying to really educate more on the county spending and where it's going and the things that we're doing, this is kind of a snapshot. So I brought this, I think, last week.
Yeah.
And.
It's kind of neat, because it shows how much money is budgeted for each product.
Yeah.
Shows where all this comes.
And it includes different, you know, just a snapshot of different services that some people may not know that are being provided. So any feedback on this in the next month would be greatly appreciated.
It could be a great information source for the community on what's going on to, what's gonna happen.
This is an ongoing project, this is the audit summary that Scott came a few months ago and presented to everybody. And then each of you would have gotten this copy, and so I think it was last month. But each of you should have gotten this, and I asked each of the departments to identify anything that might involve their department. So any, any areas that might involve your department that in regards to creating policy. Because there's a, a lot of this, the deficiencies deal with policies that we don't have. And so I would like, if you guys are working on that, and if you've already started anything, that would be something in our monthly reports. If you guys will report on anything related to the audits for your department. An example, and I've been using Stephanie, and she could be a great resource for any of you. She has access to. H, explain the access, the.
Society of Human Resource Managers is a, it's a society, and we have access to policymaking, different counties and, and states. Policies and procedures, so that we could use those as templates for our policy. Instead of reinventing an actual policy, it would be something I would send you a template, and you could just go over there and review it. And what would pertain to your organization and your department and any funding and stuff. So it's, it gives you something to base it on, so that instead of just coming from scratch, it's very, policymaking is very difficult. Especially when you have to make sure that everything's.
So as I started working through here, looking at commission responsibilities, some of it's where it's just commission, and some it's department wide. And I'm actually gonna hand out two or three policies that I, that she had started on and found some examples, and then I've given them out last week. This is gonna be kind of a tedious process, but if we just kind of work through them one at a time. But the ones I'm gonna hand out today, if you guys will look over these, and if you have any questions, any recommendations. We'll just, each month we'll be visiting this, and then any input of things that you're identifying and working towards. So the first one, it's an anti-drogh policy. The second one is a code of ethics and business conduct policy. And, oh, was that the one too? Yeah, there was another one, the federal funds.
No, you said you were gonna weigh on that one, because you wanted, you thought.
No, that was the amendment one.
Oh, the federal.
Yeah, or you can email it to them or however they want, but I can email them now. I'll just, there's that one. I know you guys are probably more emailing, not so much paper, so. I'm, I'm half old school.
I'll email you all that.
I'm half old school, half, not.
Okay, I can email this out to everybody else.
Okay, I need to. But if you will look over those, any feedback, and then I'm hoping we can just kind of, every month we'll just start working through. And then as we identify the policies, if we agree on them, then they'll be implemented and added to kind of an overall operations manual that's countywide. Yeah, I got. Sorry. Well, I only get to have her as a group once a month. Also, I believe in preparation for these meetings, you guys get the budgets, budget status fund by department, which will be your department. And one thing I would like is if you can also be reporting on your budget and kind of where you're at along the year. I, so I've been starting going, especially since with August, I go through and I highlight, and if anything looks like it's starting to get out of balance, then for me, I have to check with the department. And kind of say, hey, what's going on? Many times there can be an explanation, because sometimes money is spent all at one time throughout the year. But if you guys can bring these with you, and that way, if there's something that we need to know about, it'd be very helpful. To know once a month, or even if you need to let us know earlier. The other thing is, is that also when we get to about this time of year, especially as some of these budgets start looking like they're being used up. If you're bringing purchase orders to us. For me, it would be very helpful if, if you can kind of show me where it's coming from, and that you, you've got enough in your budget to cover that. Because we're gonna, some places may get to where it looks like, well, this is gonna push us over. And so that information is really important for us. I try to watch this, but there's a lot of departments and a lot of. And so that component is very helpful to me. And. Lastly, the budget prep application that we have available to us. I talked to somebody at CIC, and so for next year, we would like to implement that. And training is available, but they recommended waiting till about a month before. The budget next year, so she thought maybe like March or April of next year, they'll come and do a training. But the other thing we can do is they have a webinar demo that I had watched. I think I asked one of you guys, if that's still accessible, if we can get that, then what I'd like to do is have the department heads come in and we'll do that webinar. Just gives you an overview of how this budget prep application works. And we could do that in the next couple of months. And then in the spring, we'll have it like a department-wide training to where we can implement that. And there's like six or seven steps, and it walks, it walks you through the department head, how to prepare a budget, and. It looks like it'd be very helpful. I'm also going to that training this week, and one of the sessions is the budget prep demo and the application, so I hope I can, I hope I can. So anyway, that's about it for now.
Brett?
Well, I've enjoyed the last couple of weeks. Found out it's very hot in Europe. It was like 95 degrees warm in Paris, and they don't have air conditioning over there. But we did go through Buckingham Palace, and we've got Susan Bum and Lisa, and through the Luther. Did not get to go up on the Eiffel Tower, because it was like a four hour waiting list. Could get up on it to go there, so, but had very nice vacation, so. And I guess everything ran well while I was gone, so.
We're all still there.
Still here, yes, so, other than that, I don't have any.
Thank you all. Unless we got anything else?
I have this done, oh, for that.
Oh, you have Hadoon?
Yeah, resolution. So she's going to. Rhonda's gonna correct this resolution, and we need to do it for you, and then in the meantime, while she gives, is that all?
So we need these guys. We're calling. Anybody wants to stay here for the post, for the. No, okay. Do you want, do you want me to go over that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that real quick. Let, let's do the Basterd Post Office, because I think that's gonna go through quick. Because we, in the meantime, we received a letter that I just got, so pardon me. From the Estates Postal Service. And it looks like they are planning on using an existing location. In nowhere, or in Basterd. I won't use, I won't put the address out, because I don't know if that's a good situation, but. They originally came and talked to us about having a position where they could put boxes outside. Because the lease was up, but now they were saying that they may have found a new location. I'll put this up, I'll, again, I'll show you that.
If you want to see the.
So we invited them to this meeting. And we want people from Basterd also here.
Yeah, well, because we were concerned it.
I guess I can read the load of this, now it says. I guess I can read the letter. It says zero six kind of commercials. The United States Postal Service is considered relocated retail services currently provided in the Bassett main office. Said yet to be determined locations closest reasonably possible to the previous location. The postal service is considering relocation because of the loss of lease on the post office. Despite significant cost reductions, the postal service continues to experience a net loss and no law intends to, continues to decline because of increased electronic communication. As a self-supporting government establishment, they receive no tax dollars. For its operating expenses, the postal service must rely on sell postage products and services to generate revenue. In the face of the unsustainable deficits, the postal service must seek ways to cut costs, increase revenue and use its physical facilities as efficiently as possible. The relocation project will consist of preparing a suitable substitute location, preparing the new location for use at post office and then transferring the retail services to their new location. The postal service will continue retail services in the Bassett main office until the new post office is up and running. And under taken this project, the postal service will put process set out thirty nine CFR two quarter one badge four for soliciting and consider an input from the community and local officials. As we're at the beginning of the process, I'm often discussing the project with you. In our discussion, I would address the need to relocation, outline the proposal, those other considerations, explain our process for soliciting. Consider an input of the affected community and ask input from you and other local officials regarding the proposal. If you'd like to discuss the project, please contact me by sending fifteen thousand twenty two. We will send an initial news release outlining the proposal, warrant, more news media, serve the community and post a copy of information and the public lobby of the post office. Nor at this point in the process, we would set up a public meeting to discuss the potential relocation with the community, but the pandemic impact can cause, particularly as it relates to the guidance to reduce public hours, the usual process holding period, meaning to discuss the planned retail relocation would be a risk for employees and customers. Instead, the postal service will post the information required to be presented at a public meeting in the lobby at the current post office and mail a copy to all members of the community. A copy of the posting is attached. In this posting, the postal service will identify the specific need the postal service faces. Outline the proposal to meet the need through relocation, solicit written input on the proposal, provide an address to which the community and local officials may send written appeals as a tentative decision and comments on the proposal. Appeals and comments will be accepted for a period of thirty days following the post. Additionally, we will explain one, explain the reasons for the relocation, two, identify the site or area or boat on which the postal service anticipates relocating the retail services. And three, describe the anticipated size of the retail service facility for the relocated services and the anticipated services to be offered in the new location. The postal service may identify more than one potential relocation site or area. For example, when the postal service is not selected among competing sites. After a thirty day comment appropriate, the postal service will consider options and for receipt, identify the reasons why the postal service's tentative decision of the proposal is or is not the optimal solution that they identified being part of consideration. The postal service will make a final decision to proceed with, modify or cancel the proposal. Postal service will inform you and write a response and send news release announcing the final decision to the local news media or post a copy of information to the public lobby of the post office. The postal service then will implement the final decision. The postal service decides to use a site or area that it did not identify in the posting, then our regulations requires the postal service to return to the posting stage of the process to provide new information regarding the new site or area. We look forward to working with you and your staff as this project develops. Sincerely, Ron for singer, real estate specialists. That is the letter we just received.
Yeah, this is, this, that's the current.
So this is the current address and they're proposing moving this somewhere else, but they don't give a new address.
Okay.
So it sounds like in the letter, they're going to be sending it to the residents, they're going to send the letter to the residents when they're going to have a meeting after the post office in the lobby.
They're not having, that's what they just said. They're sending out letters and they'll ask people to give them. So.
So they're still seeking a location.
Okay.
Four hundred and sixty feet within the location of the.
My, what I'm reading is they've identified the location. Yeah, they're not telling us what the location is. They're going to send it out to everyone. So I have no idea what the location is. This says they've identified something and they're sending out the location. So, and I don't know that because this is kind of from the. So at some point, now I'm in a very near future, you guys all should receive something saying where their location is. I can tell you what we talked about, but I don't know. I don't know what the.
Well, that letter, that extra piece in there said that the services at the retail location will stay the same. So that means they're looking for a physical location and not just boxes.
That's right.
Which is not what we thought originally happened. So that's good.
No, because they asked, when they came up, they didn't want to put the concrete pad, puts a little box on it. As we all charter for, or community, gated community where you go into big box area. So, but at this point in time, they sent a letter saying they're doing something else. So that's, that letter got sent to us on eight eighteen. So I would imagine that you will be receiving a letter in the next few days.
Is, is it you made the proposal or the Bassett people made the proposal or does the US Postal Service is staying?
They're making, they're saying what they want to do. I mean, right. It won't be with anything that we know. It won't be with anything we discussed because they've found some other.
So they're doing their own thing. They're looking, yeah, because we don't, we don't really have any, we don't have control over that. They were alerting us to the process. Because I think at some point they're maybe wanting to use some of the county-owned property, but it sounds like maybe they found something that they're going to which is ideal if they can find another location and keep it, keep all the services there just in a different building. That's ideal. Versus them closing it and putting in the, you know, exterior boxes.
What they talked, yeah, what they talked to us about was that we would let them use some of the land at the community center to put in the boxes and look and they came back to the, I'm not sure if they wanted to put concrete down. Then they talked about open holes in the tennis court. And then I've never really talked about much other than that. I've had some residents call, contact me if they live there. It's the county would let them use the maybe go down like, you know, the county, there's a board that loves that. So they have not questioned us one iota about that. That would be something that would have to be talked about amongst the residents and the people that are in the community center. There may be a good, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's something I talked about. So.
So who does the US Postal Service contact? I mean, they send the letter to you.
They're going to send the letter over, isn't it? That's in Bassett. I'm assuming that they've got wherever they're wanting, and I don't know where that location is. But they will send a letter to each of you. Anybody that lives in that or uses that post office, I don't know, is there seventy some or something like that? I think they told me there was thirty some boxes inside because they were looking on a forty eight dollar unit, but that there's also rural delivery that comes out of there as an order. Does it come from London or somewhere else?
Well, they get their stuff from the Bassett post office and then Amanda delivered it here.
Okay, so I didn't know, like I was saying. So I, I don't know anymore. You guys know more about it than I do because I, the first I heard about is when they kind of talked about the the building with that, but box office. I guess one of the concerns was that they put up lights or hot school that's what they, what they're for. Nobody knows. So. Oh, there was, I didn't think that has anything to do with them because they haven't, okay. Yeah, I don't know. It said, you know, other white flags. It might have been something they set out to think about, but I had been told that they didn't have one to put concrete pad down. I didn't do that that way.
And I just didn't know who their contact person was. Is there a name after?
Well, the name I just said, that's the person that's the real estate guy. I mean, if you want to talk to somebody from the post office itself, then there's something, I would talk to the post master in O six seven. Yes, he's in charge of that area.
Okay.
The London guy can tell you some information, but what I'm saying is the guy in O six city is the one in charge and then he talks to that guy Denver. The guy Denver said they didn't want to do that. So. But the test will go with work is you got, you can have people down there and not be safe and why would you tear up the concrete that you guys use for whatever festivals you have. So I'm thinking they found a location somewhere. Word is I can't tell you.
Sound like according to the letter.
I've heard some of the other things that I've got to tell you, but that says that every resident of Bassett that uses a post office and do a letter saying what they're or what they're intending on. And that's the thirty day, what do they call that?
Right. Josh is that right to whatever.
That's what you guys have involvement to say. This is our ideal memory. So I couldn't tell you what that is. I've never had, I've never seen a post office quote as for that or moved.
Well, and the jury wanted to do that for years. So when I talked to the carrier, she was just saying, yeah, they just simply got a letter in the mail middle of summer saying they're closing it. She said, so I don't know what they're doing.
Oh, they sent a letter outside and they were closing.
To the post office. Yeah. So she said, her only contact was they were going to close. Now I think because there's been discussion about it, they're reviewing it. Yeah, she said, I don't know. We'll just get her mail from London instead.
Yeah, I don't know how to.
And she also said we could also literally everybody's the word because it's two block radius. Just something the person just want.
They do want.
They already knew the real carrier. So she's like, we could just go to the, the two blocks.
So they would, so I don't, I have no idea.
Well, and that's what she figured they would do and could do and I'm sure as a carrier, that's true.
To put a post office box up for everybody?
No, just put your own mailbox up.
I mean, I put your own box up.
But they do, they do remember down certain streets, there's just some of the streets that they don't go over to.
Because they would not, if there's no post office there, then they would have a box or you could put a little box on the. And I have no idea what their idea is. So based on that letter, that sounded to be here today too, and they didn't show up, but we got this letter. So I'm assuming they've already did something. Because I, my concern was what they were doing and the community didn't know and we didn't know. I wasn't going to give them, I mean, we talked about it, that's up here, but it wasn't something we were going to prove without going back and talking to everybody in there because it's doesn't affect us, but it affects everybody in that community. So the thing is, it looks like they found the location and they're going to send you letters and they're going to have something about it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Matt, you had some stuff. You guys might want to stick around for this stuff.
Those three policies. I'm going to have to re-many of those three policies for you to look over and maybe like just take one or two at a time.
Um, for the next week or.
Not today, but just as we kind of progress, I gave these to them last week and then like every couple of weeks, if we can consider them and a deep review and then okay them. And then as we get feedback from them.
Okay, so I'm here to, is it still this morning? I'm here this morning to talk to you guys about a letter you received from a state and officer about the ratio study that the state did. We remain compliant on our median ratio, which is the middle point of our sales ratio. We came in at ninety two point nine, we're allowed ninety to one ten. And that was on residential. It says that commercial is sixty three, but it says we're in compliance. So I'm not, this sounds like we're out on that, but the letter said we're in. Where we get, where we got deemed or where we're out of compliance was in our C O D. Coefficient of dispersion. Think of it as the condensation of data. If you got a larger C O D, you're going to be more spread out from that median point. So you're going to have more outliers. What I mean by outliers and what we're going to do to combat that is I've got a couple of handouts here. Photos of properties that actually sold last month. First one, if you notice, it's a night, I kind of listed across the top. One of this is nineteen hundred tone. We have it as average, average minus, average minus, which means the quality of build is average for that year. It's a two-story, full two-story. The average minus, first one is a C D U. So that's, that's condition desirable to you for the current. The last one, average minus is a physical condition. If you guys kind of look at that property, just a quick glance, you'd probably say that property is not average minus condition. This is what I'm running into across the county. Some of our calls are just like chopper. Most of them are good and it's reflected in there, but it's these that are out. We have this at seventy three thousand two hundred for value. It's sold for under twenty thousand. So okay, yeah. So our ratio came in at three twenty three. So these are the outliers that we're looking to convince back down and get that C D U under control.
So this to me sounds like it could be subjective, but is there like a checklist you work through and then it kind of tells you the condition or the person is visually looking at it?
It's, that's training. It's training. You guys, you have enough training, you go out on the property. One of the things we are going, we've already done once is I went out with Christine and I'm also taking Michelle out when we're doing sales. We spent an hour just driving around Osage City and we would just drive by a property and say, what's great is the view. We'd stop in front of it, we'd look at it, we'd come up with it. That's something I'm looking at doing more in depth later on is maybe taking Christine, Michelle and myself out and just going around and having a list of properties to go buy and get the sale. We're going to come to an understanding of what a C D U is, a desirability effects. Because that's ultimately what affects the rental or a residential property is desirability. If you've ever seen any of those shows that are all over HGTV, it's all about the desirability. That's what dictates the price tag. So yes, it is objective.
Objective or subjective?
It's objective.
Okay. You have measures that you use to determine.
Yeah. Here's another. Just objectively.
You said objective.
I mean, it's subject. Sorry. Yes, it's subject to the appraisal opinion.
Right.
And I cannot bring an extra copy of that. So it's got the same stuff across the top.
Say, why is it that?
Yep, yep, yep. It's just the opposite. That's why I brought it in. It's nineteen ten. We've got a construction quality is fair plus, meaning it doesn't have probably the near the overhangs. It's more of a straight layout. The roof lining is straight where this one is the hip roof. Fair and average. Again, fair and average, that's a two-step difference. You probably don't normally see that unless you're maybe maybe adjusting for location on the C D U, but in most instances, you would adjust up on the C D U a half a step if it's like out of the lake area.
This ratio number we're looking at on there, is that the ratio you're talking about, the ninety two to one ten?
Those are the outliers.
Yeah, that's the ninety to the, the one ten. Both those are out. So that, and that's what's kicking our C D O out, C, C, sorry. C O D out is those outliers. They can only kick so many of the outliers out. If you just look at the sheet on residential, we had two hundred and thirty one sales. They kicked out twenty and we were still out. So they kicked out around ten percent. So we need to get better at our C O Ds and our C D Us to help our C O Ds.
So how, what's a timeframe? I mean, what's a, what's a timeframe of.
To get this correct. I hope to get data collection done in September, early September. Um, I hope to get data collection done in September, early September, and I would like to go out and start hitting some of our bigger communities and resetting all those trade and C D Us in those communities to get biggest populace done by the first week. Now, are we gonna have everything in accounting that that time done? It'll probably take two years.
Exactly, yeah.
That's, that's ambitious, yes, that's very ambitious, but you guys start something, we got half the time.
It's definitely.
We might just get Osage City done, or we might have Burley game done, or might get, you know, like the, I'll do some more research to see where I think we're out the most. And a lot of that has to do with, uh. I'm afraid a lot of it has to do with turnover and appraisers you have over the past couple of years, one will come in and tell the office staff to do it one way, the next group comes in and says, oh, we're gonna shift this up. And then you get, where do you got these descriptions? Yeah.
Well, and you said you agreed some policies of just different things in your office that was.
Yeah, 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 and training is a big part, I think some people were, and Christine's been to a lot, I haven't been around a lot of years. Um, Michelle's very capable of doing the job, um, I just don't know that she's had a lot of her train, I think she's been from task to task to complete that. I've been doing a lot of in-office training. Um, yeah, so I think I'll go ahead and address this, you'll be getting another letter, I just got last Friday. Um, if you want me to come in and talk to more on it, I will once you see the letter, but they're also telling us we're out of uh statistical compliance. Um, which means that there were a couple of things that we didn't perform last year that we should have, therefore we got working on compliance. Um, like the state will give us a call, those I watch, and did address this. One of them is for this to go out and reset secret C D Us. The other thing that I found out just this morning was that once, before we certify values in June. If the sale is, if the sale comes through between January one and when we certify values or send C D Ms out. We're not changing that value, we're not keeping track of those properties sold and reestablishing a new market value based on the sale price department. So before we certify, we look at the sales that come through and we can say, well, that's, two people agreed on that, that's the new market value. We're gonna choose the sale price as our value method and that's gonna give us a one. So if you've got three, four months of ones coming through, that alone is gonna reduce your spread. It's gonna convince a lot higher.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so there's a couple of things you can do and we're gonna start doing them. But if you guys have any questions, public has any questions, please call, please stop by, our office is open, doors always open now as long as we're trying to be able to.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
That resolution, good.
I'm not much for, for, already signed.
Yeah.
David, you have some stuff?
Yeah.
I need to get on the road.
Yeah. Be safe.
We do.
Thank you. Stephanie's gonna email me, yeah, there's three of them.
We we do flyer, I do flyer once a month and Fred knows, he sees, or this is what, what I get out, uh, at least once a month and some of the other places we take them to, so they can go now too, so, and actually I've incorporated the senior centers too. So basically what this, what this situation is now is is that I have a printer. The printer I have right now is just a regular printer, I think it costs us three hundred and something dollars. And I can't use the second tray on it and the rollers to put the paper in or it miss sometimes. I got estimates from Logan, I got estimate from Hartman, something to do for it. Um, on what do we need to get an actual commercial printer with color, if I do the, the elderly color. This is kind of a smaller one. Um, they, they kind of expect it, um, they, uh, we have different people that like different uh little games on it and stuff, so uh I do like word search even. I'm gonna scream, sorry. So I tried to incorporate the different little games in it and um I didn't used to put the answer key on and tap somebody that questioned one of the uh little games, so now I put answer keys on. So that you never watch.
So what are these?
Um, right now I'm so pretty much off the computer, they don't have a problem with it, the printer doesn't have a problem with it.
And this is the one you get about thirty or about a hundred fifty dollars?
Um, yeah, they're, yeah. Pretty, pretty expensive. Um, the one that I took, the Logan one, which the two from, the two from Logans are easy to buy. And then the one from uh Hartman is a purchase. Um, and the cartridges.
It's got a little suction on there too?
Yeah, it does, yeah, absolutely, but uh the cartridges on that is um the black is like twenty thousand and the uh color is like um seven or eight thousand.
How much is?
Hartman, this is sixty, this is five years.
That's eleven thousand dollars. I happen to have one of these printers that value a lot, that remind us not have color.
Well, and I brought, I did run a real, how many copies? I put them on a month.
And how many?
Um, anywhere from hundred fifty to three hundred.
Did you give these out?
Um, all of the people would come into the senior center, we'd get them and then we'd send them out if they were lost or something and we'd take, I'd take them around with something different. There it is. Um, and here's my uh this is my budget, so actually
Does uh?
I have.
How much does the state pay?
This, this would be, I don't know how much the state paid at this point for, for our copy, this is senior center. Then the stuff there.
Well, that printer out there is.
Well, it's got both, it does have both, and they do, they will reimburse us for print, but the other thing is too is I don't have a way of figuring out how much to print it, I mean, how many, I guess I could just sit down and freak it out.
Well, both like. Hartman, I mean, Hartman is transportation purpose.
Right.
So then submit fifty percent of the fees for transportation. As you're, I mean, it's got both.
Right, right.
In all of them.
Right, yeah, yeah, and I just started doing that um fairly recently, we put in the, the prices and the, the stuff in it, and the map was in there because I have so many people, even though they're from here that didn't have it to with the back. So they actually have to. I'm just asking if I could do one of the printers and the Hartman is the one that I kind of think of her at this point.
This is if you bought it outright. The three thousand, four thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That must be a monthly. Which, which one is it?
Two hundred bucks.
And it's the.
Maintenance agreement is seven hundred twelve, seven hundred twenty dollars a year, so it's a sixty dollar month with maintenance agreement?
Which one is it?
So you would pay a lease payment and you pay sixty dollars a month for maintenance?
No, the sixty dollars is if we didn't have an agreement, that's what the minimum they did use is for many.
So it's on copies.
Right, it pays on copies, so this would be what he pays.
But if you bought it outright.
Mm-hmm. Maybe we wouldn't have a sort of.
Yeah.
So you have to get it.
Yeah, yeah. Right, that's my question is if you buy it outright, you're still paying sixty a month? If you buy it outright, you're paying four thousand dollars. And then you're paying sixty dollars a month for maintenance.
It's not the minimum, the minimum of this, otherwise you're gonna pay, yeah. Or the other one, and that one, the usual one, the other one is a hundred and eighty five.
Yeah, it's usually a hundred and eighty five.
Every one of, every copy we have, so.
Yeah, we do. It seems like a ton of money.
It does, it is, I mean.
So the printer we have now, you have a, I agree, a printer that's on my.
It's convenient.
You have a commercial printer.
I know, it's not a commercial printer.
Okay.
I have a black one.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we have a black commercial printer.
That's a black one.
Right, and now the transportation. We actually, actually there's two black ones there and I don't know where the other one came from.
Do you don't have color?
They prefer, you know that Heather, come on.
Preference and efficiency sometimes don't match.
I know.
I sure as well, I have to do that, but I think it's worth the black one.
I would love to have, yeah.
The commercial one?
But the ink is all dried.
Well, and I, and we have a smaller black one too.
He would love to have a printer, and I know she could use one and I could.
Yeah, definitely.
That's fine.
Yeah, I then I have a problem with the heart one, I think we'd be at least is because of the number of cars, why would we want to pay all the money?
If you do the lease, then the maintenance is included?
Well, that's the maintenance deal.
Yeah.
You have a maintenance agreement. And that, that one includes the ink, the way I understand it, yeah.
Ink is.
Yes.
Right.
The ink is included in that.
If you choose the three notes, you're paying a hundred and fourteen twenty six a month.
That would be the lease.
What does the hundred and fourteen twenty six include?
That's includes just that's.
That's just to get it to your property and correct. Okay, how much is the maintenance a month? Then I'm at a sixty dollars.
And that's the minimum of it.
Okay, now the number of copies.
Right.
Right.
So you're way over two hundred dollars a month?
Not do I do, that's hundred and seven four.
If I just do that many copies.
She said minimum.
Well, if she does more than thirty three copies in a month, then it probably will be.
Thirty three or thirty three hundred?
Thirty three thousand.
Oh, okay. He said thirty three.
He did, I heard.
Thirty three thousand. That would take a long time ago about that. Yeah.
So one eighty one?
I don't think you need to post these nine a year. And the other one, where'd that other sheet go? The one? I got too many sheets now, the other one will be one eighty three, thirty three a month, plus one forty five.
And then fifty percent of that needs to be included in her monthly submissions for general transportation or more.
This would be three hundred and fifty.
That's just fifty percent of these.
Plus.
And then we make, we make other. But, and I need to check, but I think that you could have, we don't know how many covers.
So this on volume basis, fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred per month is this, that other one is a year of the twenty thousand, thirty thousand a year. I think that's a lot, obviously.
Why ask?
Yeah, I think that's a year of a lot. So you're looking at a hundred and seventy five dollars a month for thirty six months.
Well, I have the budget to pay for.
And she said she uses that copy also for additional things for transportation, so if you think you're using it sixty percent of the time, then put sixty percent in the brick.
Well, she, that's, that's gonna trick the bar.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, yeah, and then the other question that I have is, and then I did put that on the uh the request from the K dot, the new um, the new budget, but um I budgeted in for a new computer. And the drivers use it, okay, the drivers use it, we have, we have the dispatcher's computer and it was. And we have a computer that the drivers use and we use it for extra stuff, if something's down or something.
So.
I did for the, the K dot, yes, so, and I have the budget now for it too, but I didn't know where you wanted me to check, it's not, it's not a laptop, it's a regular computer. Go ahead.
Sorry, different topic, no, I just saw something on here, but.
Is it tied into accounting systems at all?
Yes.
So I would call some.
It's got, it's got the time clock on it and all that, is that what you're asking?
Something that's compatible that he's got all fire, all the fire blocks and whatever. So. I would really call it fire.
Fire wall.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yes. I had noticed this a while back.
You can tell much I've had this.
And there's nothing I can do because of the vehicle.
There's an error here.
There's an error?
In this contractual line, I think I, I chose it wrong and I showed it to Christine.
Okay.
A while back, and then I forgot about it, but there's something, there's something wrong in this line. You see how it says that you're negative?
Mm-hmm.
That means you have more money in your budget lined than what was budgeted.
That means I went over.
No.
No?
No. It means there's something, something has been applied, see, it, it looks like you have a credit here.
Yeah.
I thought that that's what I'd went over.
No, this is, this is how much you have left in these lines.
Uh-huh.
Or this is how much you've used. This says you, you've lose, you've used four percent less than your entire budget for the year. So there's something wrong, and they're probably gonna have to do a, a more refined search, I think there's, there's just.
Okay, I thought it, it, no.
Can you give me that line item number?
They're probably, now it's better because it used to be a lot bigger than that.
I thought it would.
So Ron, if we're done, I think we've reached the max at some point.
So I want to know if they've put
I think something got credited is what happened.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we enter the early term of office systems. For the color copy printer scanner, oh, I have fax out too. For uh the senior center in the amount.
You better say trick and general.
And general transportation, uh, we're gonna do the lease option at thirty six months of one fourteen twenty six. And the maintenance agreement is sixty dollars a month, gives us thirty three cop, thirty three thousand copies for the year. All those in terms of.
All right.
All posts on.
Okay, so I'm writing the way I did just, right? This is, this can worry about, this can worry that in the mystery. Uh, check with these guys over here for this, I mean, so what this should use. So right here is what I'm saying, that would be what my, my budget is for, what I have left for, yes, buying, yeah, you've used sixty six percent of your budget, yes, fourteen thousand.
So I do get all of them, they will probably.
Here, let me show you.
They will probably bring that all over here.
Contractual services, your budget for the year is fifty two thousand for contractual, it says you have fifty four thousand left.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So there's, okay, there's just an error.
But this is correct.
This is what's left, but you are over on your personal, cause you should be about sixty-seven percent here, eighty percent, so you're gonna have to. Well, I don't know why that's happened like that.
I got you.
Yes, if they're having a, so when, and if someone hasn't invented, like we had that mud run years ago, is that what they called it?
Yeah.
Okay, Perry Thompson did it, um so if they haven't invented, so they're having an October fest.
Okay, so who signs this?
I'm sorry?
You sign it?
You sign it on one side and I sign it on the other, or no, you're.
Alright, so we just need a motion for it?
Yes.
Motion to approve the retail views, is that what there is?
That's thermal members license.
Thermal members license number twenty-two oh seven from a Zion Lutheran Church to sell retail thermal beverages. Is this for the whole year?
It's just, it, they did a permit for, it's for the whole year, but it just covers their, I mean, they can use it again.
So it expires on December thirty-first, two thousand one two. Second, all those are fair, so. All pros and cons. Heather, do you have anything else?
I don't think so. I, just curious on your thoughts on any of the policies, uh they're gonna be forwarded to Josh today on those three. And uh if we can just, every couple of weeks, kind of work through them and knock some out, we'll just start adding them to that policy manual, which will help start, should start complying with some of the things on the audit. Here is, here's, you should have code of ethics, anti-fraud and. Oh, that one, yeah, we started on that and didn't finish. So here's this one. And then there's one called uh financial management.
No, I don't.
Financial management of federal funds is the other one. Okay, well, those are the ones that I'd like to start with and if we can. Edit them how we need and then knock those out, we'll just continue on. You'll have to see if you can get Stephanie to print the warrants for federal funds.
New, welcome back.
Yeah.
It's kind of weird now.
Yeah, I know.
I'll tell you, you said it. Rodney, you don't have anything else? One little thing here. I do have an upcoming surgery, so I will be temporarily stepping down as some chair or board kind of commissioners. I will continue as service commissioner and plan that ten meetings either in person or by Zoom. I won't, but I will be serving as chairman very much effectively. To that end, I move as vice chair commissioner Pooter. To be elected as secretary chair of the six county board of county commissioners until October third, two thousand twenty-two. With the consent of the board, I will resume my duties as chairman at that October third, two thousand twenty-two. So I don't know if we made a motion now or if we just make that statement, if you could, if not. You have a problem with that?
No.
That's all I can say on that. I will hopefully, I will do everything I can to be here next week, but no promises, I'm not. That is important when you're here, you can start to be here, I may look a little bit more when I come back. Don't know how different I am, but.
We will be optimistic.
Yes.
Let's just hope I come back.
Yeah.
I hope that my finger doesn't do this anymore. Alright.
Okay.
Brett, do you want to make your most famous words at your back?
Uh, I moved to Germany.
All those are fair, so. All pros and cons. Are you governing?
Assign that to my husband so I can come to this one tonight.
Okay, I can't, I'm an artist.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes.
I want, I want to, but I wasn't able to take it, she said she couldn't put a lot, but she had taken it, so I'll see when I get back.